Testing, testing.
There he is.
Calling the order in the two hundred and fifteen session of the tenth council, August twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-one at six p.m., going to senior center fifty-two daily, uh, four eight three four one. Rocco. Carter.
President.
Miller. Eila. Transki. Taylor Burks. Warren. Gray. President. Okay, I need a motion to experience councilwoman to rat you out, not to want more. I approve black people's authority by Taylor Burks, any discussion? CNN Rose. Taylor Burks.
Yeah.
Eila. Taylor Burks. Williams.
Yes.
Carter.
Yes.
Uh, yeah. Okay, uh, any other civil agenda? I would like to move item number three four one right after the approval of minutes, so item number three after item one. The most, I know, the question, I know, uh, no, supported by written words, any discussion? Senior on the road. Eila. Taylor Burks. Williams.
Yes.
Carter.
Yes.
Miller.
Yeah.
I need a motion to approve the agenda as intended. Prove this supportive, any discussion? CNN Rocco. Taylor Burks. Williams.
Yes.
Carter.
Yes.
Miller.
Yeah.
Eila. Okay, thank you, uh, general approval, which brings us to approval of minutes from August seventeen, two thousand and one. I approve this supportive, any discussion? CNN Rocco. Taylor Burks. Ian.
Yes.
Carter.
Yes.
Miller.
Yeah.
Ian. Okay, thank you, uh, which brings us to item number three, which is the second council parliamentarian presentation presented by Oklahoma City, uh, Provo Sewer, uh, the Sewer that you take a vote in. Uh, while the Sewer is gathering, I want to read an email, uh, that, um, I received from the mayor, Mayor of Sewer, uh, your name appeared on the page twenty-four, twenty-one, city council agenda for special presentation. Please advise that at present, you have no executed contract with parliamentarian with the city of Pontiac. Such a contract is required under the city's procurement ordinance in order for the vendor to repay. Given the unusual change of ordinance that occurred before, we think it is best to have the new confidence with our city attorneys before we transact a legally executed contract, if that is considered. If that were the case, we wanted to make sure this time that you would be compliant with the city, our city ordinance and regulations. And the role of the parliamentarian will be clearly understood not to have a quasi law board that would interfere with that of the city attorney. If that is your intention to proceed in that direction, then please advise either of the city attorneys, above or myself, and we will arrange the council. So, um, we have people working in the city, uh, that have not had executed contracts presented to, uh, this body as a council. Uh, and so, uh, seeing this email, the Sewer has agreed to do this presentation today for absolutely free, so we give her anti-.
Sewer professional register for parliamentarian, and I am here to speak to the issue of how to comment. I am not expecting to accomplish this experience. That is not unusual, or if those who live around the Capitol, I mean, COVID required to time the council order to report my services to parliamentarian. I cannot attend the number of council meetings and conferences without, without expecting any purpose. Here's why I need to address the staff use of public comment to present reports on their work in the city of Pontiac. Our comments would be served of the power to address the council on issues of concern to them regarding the city and its services. Instead, there was another method by which a party of the city can present a report on their work in the city. That is to place the report on the agenda, either in advance or in advance, or the council, by a request to amend the agenda, or the president calls for changes to the agenda. On December tenth, twenty nineteen, council members will conduct the tenth Pontiac council meeting. There are many courts who could require, city of Pontiac, who cannot follow the comments while on the clock, and want to see compensation for the city of Pontiac. Their intent was to reserve public comment time for public comment. There was no intention to ruin an employee's particular report on their activities, but that should deserve public comment time for public. At the Friday evening last week, one question arose to this area of employees needing a work-related report during public comment, which is in conflict with the twenty nineteen council adopt rule. And.
The Sewer, on the word go, you also speak with the.
Yes, and that is related to the fact that you can't use city materials, city facilities, in this case, city webinars, uh, microphone to campaign. That is, that is the issue on campaign.
Comment and quote unquote.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, uh, which brings us to, uh, public comments. Ms. Elaine Grimes.
The evening has so been that way. And to remind you, I think the start of the early Doug cleaning, it's not a little praise, but they're spending seventy-nine thousand dollars on something that can be for homework, just a little bit. I did some research on the internet, come to EPA, very, uh, and I asked the screen a couple of times too. It said, uh, one of the questions is, has a city or an outside company, especially with Doug cleaning, and even if you want to determine that he is the. Uh, according to EPA, Doug, Doug cleaning, that's environmental protection, you can say, Doug cleaning has never been shown to actually provide a problem. Other statement, EPA does not recommend the air ducts complete except on an as good basis because of the uncertainty about the benefits of Doug cleaning under most circumstances. Now, one of my questions is, has more to found? If there's a certain export site hole, but if I'm not there, that can be determined by a microbiology lab expert for about fifty dollars. So, if you find something, you have to determine, is it more, is it something else to handle? Uh, is there a rodent or any insect living in station in the ducts? Is the ducts blowing dust out of the registers? If a biocide or a chemical treatment is being used by the government to clean the ducts, uh, it must be stated on the label of that product that it is EPA certified. And it gives specifically for Doug cleaning. Uh, also, the company that is chosen to do this Doug cleaning has to be licensed. And the current Doug cleaning license is required by the state of Michigan since nineteen ninety-six. Um, also, has a duck company provided a complete written outline of the cost and the scope of work needed for it? And the EPA also strongly suggests that you have three companies, the company, take a look at their system and determine whether or not it needs to, you need to. Doug cleaning itself will not do anything on COVID, it's not going to do anything. And they basically mean it's done this. So I think we have to look a little bit more on what we spend seventy-five thousand dollars on. But people are coming after the grant, people set up where that might be model of trying to do it, or we just randomly throw a card that we're doing over that, this is something needs to be. Uh, and one thing I do want to mention this too, uh, we are having, uh, people making time, but I can't say.
This is what we started, Bill Maxey on that.
I'm glad to see him first, I will talk to him. And they are too deep to like, uh, putting out a call, it's not for time, he was saying. Looks like, and one point to the question, this is obvious, some of the technical part of it. Secondly, O'Keo reads immediate attention to on cheap orange plastic burger on the middle side of the bar, right, for you. Next, I have gathered that a hundred percent of plants need to be fed, and not influenced by this, I would love to do that today. Complete importance of eating your body, no aside, duty, no buyer, on a simple common heart, and every instrument should be productive for one more guy to spend. I am lucky that best, one is properly at best, given, uh, at first, given plenty of golden records, over destiny of which is this, this management, and it's somewhere it's. Any quick difference needs and had the CFO for a council. My name is well, you say, was Paul's work for city manager, chair of the government, and the future, the CFO will have to select five, a few of those, and subject a higher five on two. We're dead, George. A follow-up on the contract participation in the city of Pontiac, on the last, with this, already, this I asked that all people who wish to. To official for industrial complex automobiles, mass automobiles, weeks of, on Monday and Fridays, between the hours of nine and eleven. The reason for that is that the company that I'm familiar with has been first industrial contract in the city. Also, I'm bored, you need unemployment, and if you call those hours, staff will speak to you, and whatever is said in that conversation is confidential. Those who have minor infractions or major infractions of law, no excuse, so far, we've had five and three were employed, and really appreciate that. Secondly, on follow-up, we did meet with the mayor and staff on contract compliance and their executive order. We're still in the process of making sure that the unemployed here, that our contractors, some and primary, that dollar turn around thirty times in the city, as you will be employed. Next week, we'll be following the sense, so to speak, and we will follow up at conclusion by me, uh, with the mayor and staff. Since prior, again, on Mondays, right, to nine and eleven, we will take call. We'll use the process, and the information will be confidential, minor and major infractions by any citizen in the city of Pontiac and senior partner will be confidential. Thank you very much.
It's mad, huh? And first of all, on that.
Believe you, council, I've seen the mayor, Sewer Pontiac, in a long time, since I've been with the government, and so we were great, that the council made some arrangements. For making it possible for the public to be able to experience the community. But I'm here today because I'm concerned about the aftermath of the drain crew. Pontiac has got a check yard, but if you drive around, it appears to be, so I have some question. One, who is responsible for removing those scooters that are scattered all over Pontiac, it's one over there down now? I don't know what he's doing over there, but sometimes we have a claim to remove these scooters from being scattered all over Pontiac. Secondly, people have garbage all up and down the water. Surely there was a point? The microphone on my list, huh?
No, I should have leave my.
Oh, uh, garbage all up and down, what is the plan? Who, who is supposed to remove the garbage that is up and around our city? And lastly, um, I want to know about the rubber marks that are on our city and makes our city look so bad. Who's supposed to remove those rubber marks? Because the people who make them have gone home and they're going to see it to clean it.
Right.
Why we got to live with this? Then lastly, I want to say, why hasn't the council changed? Been disinfected and settled, so we can go back to the council room for our meetings. It's been torn down long enough, and I know we got the money somewhere, I hope, so, thank you.
Good afternoon, believe, I'm the mayor of Pontiac, uh, Julie, what's your name? No, didn't cut it off. Hand it out. And you mean that? Okay. Um. I had the opportunity to attend the ju- drink crew, like, and some wonderful people, I want to say that, but, um, I have concern too regarding the aftermath of, uh, what was left behind. Um, when I came home, uh, later on in the evening after the drink crew, someone, I guess they were celebrating a little bit too much, forgot that they were driving in the neighborhood. And they must have been going at a godly rate because they knocked down the electrical pole on my street. So that happened Saturday night, so from Saturday to Sunday e- evening, I didn't have any electricity. We were also in danger of, uh, having the electrical line, because the pole was split in half, um, they call them hot, so houses took part in the fire. Um, something has to be done as far as letting people know, we're all for having a nice time, and respectful when they come to our community. But at the same time, we have standards and we want to be safe, um, despite the risk that everybody was out in the evening, because someone could have got killed, right? Um, I encourage us to look at speed bumps, um, maybe have more police in our neighborhoods, because, um, that's just what a good look for the city. Um, I want to say that I'm glad to see that, uh, we have time to talk about legal dumping, uh, campaign, because, um, someone decided to leave on Front Street in my neighborhood a boat. So, if we can handle that too, I appreciate that, but I just wanted to share that, um, with you all, um, I'm all for a happy, a nice time, and people coming to enjoy my city. But, um, what they left behind, that's not acceptable, thank you.
Okay, I want to just go to, uh, item number two, resolution from the city of Pontiac and council of record, that question, oh, you just know, looking from the house, you said we had talked, you talked about the difference, but I'm still a resident. And I can talk about other things, but it's something that we can say. I, I want to clarify, okay, because, because I heard the thing, uh, to get her. My name is, uh, I'm not the city of Pontiac, uh, and this is not about city business, but I will say that, I hate to, uh, speaking, uh, there's so much hate that I can do, that we can turn to each other. And it's like, that would be good, now, uh, when I heard about the school, uh, that's a contract, they have to be there to do this, they will be taking a lot, we thought that would be something good, but we don't like it, we don't have to come take a lot. It just seems like, last week when I heard the word rush, uh, that's not bothering me, uh, I sound like my name, my technique, I care, whether I'm a man or not. And since I do, I'm here, I know a lot of people don't like it, that's fine, uh, but I will say this, uh, I have not seen anything that has been rushed, since I've been, and if I did see something, but I would, uh, may or may not have a different opinion. But I would work closely with her, but what about the thing that I heard this, that's mine, so, this is not about city business, I care, if I represent a town, I can say. So I just ask that you guys, that's a tone, watching, uh, we cannot give our right to freedom of speech with them at the time. You can't, and I want to clarify that as a resident, uh, when the parliamentarian said, uh, regarding freedom of speech as a resident, of public comment, because it's not being protected by other than the city, tearing us down. We tear it ourselves down, we do it to ourselves, this is not outside of people, urban citizens, uh, backside, it's just bad, right? So, I just wanted to be clear, when people say rush, be clear and be there to prove that's much better, because why not like to get your course that come behind that, thank you very much, thank you very much.
I appreciate the speaker's effort to walk by, uh. I appreciate the speaker's effort to walk by line, but he was not talking really as, as a citizen, he was speaking about his job and his city, and that's not what you're supposed to talk about. He wanted to talk about his street, cleanliness, any of the other subjects that all of the other speakers addressed that would have been appropriate, but he was speaking about his job. Sorry, for the, for the public, okay? Just on that issue for the public, as it relates to, given the fact there were, if there was an employee who's actually a resident of the city, so are you then saying that it would be permissible for them to speak during public comment about obvious issues? Their own issue, but I'm saying, given the fact, or, or actually a person who wishes to speak and wishes to speak during public comment on their own public issues, that would be one thing, but to get up and discuss their own job, when you're in law, who's supposed to project, thank you.
Right, I'm just Sewer, um, so now we're at item number two, residents from the city attorney and the council record, that was the whole session, so much, the N C D L's fifteen point two six A P. To discuss any litigation of Black Williams versus the city of Pontiac. Getting the House of President, House of State, um, so that I show our representatives, people, um, we want another turning with, uh, with the eyes, again, that.
Clearly, attorney, listen, clearly, uh, you know the rules. You understand the resolution that was passed and not vetoed by the mayor. You know that Jamarko Mullins and associates have plenty of other attorneys.
I pointed to the attorney, I'm the one who's going to address that question you asked.
And listen, Madam Mayor, you, again, you are not recognized. Uh, when you come up with an attorney other than Mr. Chubb that you wish to speak on this item, we'll return to it. But as of right now, we're moving on to item number four, which is code enforcement, illegal dumping campaign.
Council President, the city is paying hourly. This is highly inefficient. It is a waste of the citizens' money if you are going to make him come back on another matter.
Okay. Patrick Dubrowski and Mayor Waterman. You guys have a code enforcement illegal dumping campaign?
Yes, we do. Patrick, uh, can step to the microphone. Uh, as people have talked about uh, the improvements in the city, uh, one of the things that we're very proud of is the light campaign we have to remove uh, faster lighted homes. Uh, and residences, we've done over nine hundred lighted home removals. Uh, now rendering that uh, a very accomplished uh, of the city. Another part of that is still to consider the city clean. And one of the things that we also confront, uh, despite all the efforts of code enforcement and all those of you who do take care of the city, who don't litter and who don't dump. But we do have a culture here that's existed for a long time that we want to now pay extra attention to to try to now eradicate that. So uh, I have worked with the code enforcement department as well as other city departments uh, to work on now uh, a way to attack uh, in a final way, illegal dumping and littering and cluttering in our city. Some of that you mentioned, uh, was left over from the Dream Crews. Uh, and that's also a part of the way that we want to have this program brought up. So we're here to explain to the residents and talk about the special effort we're going to make now to um, uh, direct attention uh, and to start to reduce and eliminate this longstanding problem in the city of Pontiac. You know, dumping in the city of Pontiac is a culture. It's a culture that's going to take a while to eradicate and we're going to pay extra attention to it. And here is our code enforcement officers to talk about the eleven-stage plan that we're putting in place. Uh, Patrick Brusowski is the manager of our code enforcement department. And he has both a special presentation for you as well as PowerPoint. If we can turn the lights off, uh, so people can see the PowerPoint as he goes through his presentation. Thank you, Patrick.
So, good evening, honorable council president, distinguished council members, residents of Pontiac. Again, my name is Patrick Brusowski. I'm the code enforcement manager. Tonight, we're very excited to discuss our anti-dumping campaign. Um, first off, our division, along with the mayor's guidance and leadership, we've put together a comprehensive plan um, to address the citywide illegal dumping that has been occurring. Before I get into the details of the upcoming slides, I wanted to start out by mentioning essentially what the campaign itself insists of um, and why the decision was made to move in this direction. So essentially, the name itself speaks for itself. Whereas throughout the city, we've experienced reoccurring problems of illegal dumping. This campaign is aimed at preventing the occurrence, helping to ensure those who do partake in this criminal activity are caught and prosecuted. In two thousand seventeen, the city council voted to amend our illegal dumping ordinance, moving the violation from a civil infraction to a misdemeanor offense. So that was a step in the right direction, uh, making the offense more punishable and having more severe penalties. So however, in order to help deter and enforce the ordinance, we've developed this campaign. Since that time, we've worked to identify the most frequent of, most frequent habitual sites where illegal dumping had been occurring. We have instituted regular code enforcement patrols and monitoring of these sites. And as the upcoming slides will show, um, that consists of twenty properties that we initially identified. So at this time, I'm happy to report, we've been successful in getting majority of these properties cleaned up, but the recurrence continues to serve against our case. To help fight this effort, we're installing signs, setting up remote surveillance cameras and working to advertise um, the campaign. Um, we've also applied for additional um, funding through community development block grants for neighborhood cleanup services. So that will work in conjunction with our program to help deter and enforce the campaign. So in terms of the signs, we, we started out, and I'll explain here in a moment, but we started out by installing them at the most frequent of the initial twenty sites. Um, and we plan to have those installed, those twenty-five signs installed for the next two weeks. The surveillance cameras will be coming at a later date, once we get the totality of the quotes in. Um, but we're hopeful to have them in place by the fall. Um, a reporting system has been set up between our office, code enforcement, that is, um, and the sheriff's office to where residents can call and report illegal dumping. Moving on to the slide, um, first slide here, uh, I did list all the eleven steps that the mayor mentioned. And we'll work to drill into each one of them separately. So moving on, um, the first step was to identify the worst dumping properties. I have that listed, the twenty properties there. Um, and then again, drilling furthermore, we work to identify of those the most frequent. The, those will be the, the properties where we will install signs in the next two weeks. Moving on, steps two through six essentially uh, involve collaborating with um, the Department of Public Works, the sheriff's office. Oh, I'm sorry, let me back up here. Um, I did do a drill down of each site. If you can sort of move through quickly, just an aerial image of each of the properties of the six that will, will be starting on Elm Street, Crystal Lake there. Um, Osmond Street. Stairs, um, Sanderson. Okay, so steps two through six, as I mentioned, uh, involved collaborating with the various entities, mainly DPW and the sheriff's office, um, to ensure that we can have a mechanism in place for reporting and a way to get the illegal dumping um, cleaned up and enforced. Uh, step four, as I'll drill into here, did involve the signs, developing the sign. Um, I do have an example here of what the new signs will look like. They essentially will consist of two signs on one pole. The first being um, a large thirty-six inch by thirty-six inch sign that will display the numbers to report the dumping to, um, code enforcement and the sheriff's office as well as the penalty for, for the illegal dumping. Want to go ahead and move towards, yep, one more? All right, and I wish I had a little larger for you guys to see. If you could go back one Ken. Yes, um, so as mentioned, those two signs will be mounted on a pole, seven feet high from the bottom of the large sign to the ground. Uh, the smaller sign below is a twelve inch by twelve inch sign that basically lets um, people know that the area is under surveillance. Um, and as mentioned, these will be installed in the next two weeks for the sixth prop. Turn on juice, perhaps? It's, it's on now. Okay, so step five, we're still in the process of further developing our city, um, our online code enforcement portal. The initial uh, framework is built and the guts of it, if you will, are built. And what it will be is an online portal where, where residents can go to and you can monitor track what's been done from a code enforcement perspective. You can report on, on that very same website and just give you a better understanding of where each property is in the enforcement process. Um, moving on, step six, regarding the cameras, we did our vetting process through the help of, of the attorneys and I T. And at this point, we've accomplished that. We're just waiting, as I mentioned, to get the final quotes then from those cameras, uh, from those vendors. Um, steps seven through ten pertain to advertising. And this will be an ongoing process, really. Uh, we've begun it, but we'll further refine um, with um, handout material and broadcasts on various streams of media. Um, finally, step eleven, enforcement, I did talk about that. And essentially what it, what it boils down to is we did set up regular monitoring of the sites. So at this point, anything new that comes in, we're able to capture that. We can work with the sheriff to file a police report and we can work ourselves to um, get the, get the sites cleaned up. So um, in closing, this campaign is helping to serve um, to keep the city as light-free as possible by deterring and enforcing the illegal dumping. Um, and at this time, I'm, I'm very thankful and appreciative of council's time tonight. And I'm happy to entertain any questions you guys may have.
Um, Mr. Dubrowski, does anybody have any questions? Go ahead, Councilwoman.
Good evening. Sure.
But the dumping, uh, we starting this campaign, you know? I don't play politics, so I'm not going to do that. It's, it's, it's amazing, the city been like this for three or four years, I've been sitting here and, and been needing this for quite a while. But what I want to say to you is that none of this, this is all sound great. You know, I see stuff dumped all over the city as I ride it, I be in my district, I know it's all over the city. And this campaign is good, but I am a true believer that you can't do anything if you don't clean your own house. What I mean by that is that we got dumping on city properties that we don't clean. I have to be fair about this. We got properties that people are not, are telling me, my constituent and myself, that we don't even mow our own grass. We don't even take care of our own. So how are we going to take care of some dumping when we got dumping on our own lots? We got to start with ourselves. We do. And like I said, it's not you personally, this is business. Until we get some cameras, we're not going to do anything. People are going to dump and pay the five hundred dollar fine because they tell me that all the time, I just be it. And I tell you, one of the things that you guys really have to really touch upon is these businesses is getting away with murder around here. They got trash, debris, won't cut their grass. It's awful. It is awful. So this campaign include businesses because it's not fair to just go at the residents and he's dumping because I know some businesses got more trash behind it than, than the landfill. And we need to give them tickets and they need to be taken care of. It's awful. I ride this city and I'm sure most of my residents feel the same way. I'm embarrassed. You're right about this, this, our dream crew, don't get me wrong, it's nice. But it's a disaster coming down with the trash. I just seen it today. It, it's just awful. So all I'm saying is that before we start doing something like this, we got to clean our own up. We got to clean up the city properties and these locks and stuff that's in the city. And I got a lot of them in my district right now and need cutting and, and things need to be done and dumped.
I understand. One thing, uh, I'll just say too to that is uh, we are not segregating or limiting these properties to any one in particular type, um, it applies to all properties and. Sorry.
I'm done.
Okay, thank you.
Councilwoman Taylor Burks.
I have a red hole in this nose, I just blast through it. But uh, there is a section uh, over by where the, the nose is. And as you're coming off, uh, 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 off of one of the streets uh, onto the main street, there, they dump there like mad. And I don't know if you have been over that way or not. Uh, uh, because I, I turned it in years ago. And, and, but every time that they go, whenever I turn it in, they would go over there and clean it up before they can get back to where uh, 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 from the dump. Someone had come and dumped again. And, and, and what we did, what we did notice that, uh, especially on the weekends after dark, people that doesn't live here was coming over there dumping also. Now, you know, I'm not saying that there's a way, because nobody gonna sit up all night, you know? But uh, uh, they do have a problem uh, uh, in that particular area.
Well, what I'll do is after this, I'll get together with you, make sure we have that listed and see where we're at with that, okay? I know that once we get the cameras in, in place, um, that'll help. I just want to make sure that um, we identify this.
And that's, I didn't mention cameras before, and I know the last meeting, uh, uh, last DPW meeting we had before everything started crashing, uh, uh, we were told that we were getting uh, cameras. So did we get the camera?
Um, from, from code, code enforcement side, we have not gotten cameras. Uh, I can't speak for DPW. Um, I don't believe they have, but I can let them.
Would you mind checking for me? Because that was one of the things that uh, we, we decided to, uh, for them to get so that, so that it wouldn't be so hard on trying to find out where all this stuff is going on.
Okay.
I appreciate it.
No problem. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Anybody else have questions? Patrick?
Hello, hello, Patrick.
Hello.
I want to thank you, thank you for answering your phone and uh, and delivering the messages. Uh, my, my, my biggest victim was Hawthorne Park. We have two cameras that, that, that we provided in Hawthorne Park. So I'm not sure exactly what you buying, but we have two cameras and they have four G L T. There, uh, I don't know, I think I paid two hundred and fifty bucks for them. And I got a fifteen a month for uh, Boost Mobile. I just take the, take the chip out of Boost Mobile, plug it into the camera. And so he gives me pictures and videos. So Oakland, Oakland County has been responding to uh, to, to pick up most of the trucks that have, that have been dumping debris. I appreciate that. The next question I was going to ask you is um, is somebody going to go out and cut all the right aways? I mean, Wal, Walton is a mess. I mean, you got, you got, you got the right away inspectors, the crews are working, but it's high grass, five feet high down by Richardson Street. I mean, it should be very obvious to someone while they're working. Thank you.
Okay.
Uh, thank you. Anybody else have questions for Patrick?
I just wanted to say one question, Mr. President, when you mentioned the cameras. You know, we had uh, Councilwoman Water had missed cameras. So we still have gotten two cameras quite, well, a year or so ago. So, and like I said, Patrick, you guys don't have cameras. Unless we get cameras, this is all will be anything. Because what a lot of people in Pontiac don't, I'm going to give people in Pontiac a credit a lot. Because I've been out there with Randy, cleaned up trash and all that kind of debris, but they throw out in parks and my park. Most of the people that dump don't live here. They do come into our city and dump it here. And so those cameras will be good because you can get the tags and the license plate. One of my citizens was telling me how in one community, they got the cameras and they can zoom in on the tag.
Right.
Until we get something like that technology, we, we, it's, it's going to be hard to.
Well, I was hopeful tonight to present that to you and give you an actual timeframe for when they will be installed. I can tell you, it is part of the program, absolutely. It's essential, fundamental part of the campaign. So um, I'm hopeful by fall that we get them. Pardon?
Okay, uh, Patrick, um, uh, thank you for uh, presenting tonight. I guess, um, two things. Uh, I would love to see this program uh, matched uh, with uh, a litter cleanup program uh, similar to what they have uh, in Ferndale, Royal Oak in Detroit with the trash cans and other things. We've got major corridors, especially in my district, Auburn Street and others, uh, that don't have any cleanup or visibility there uh, to start, which would be uh, good. Um, my colleagues have mentioned the grass and other things and we deal with that uh, every year. Uh, but my major concern is how are we going to incentivize having the people to actually come and clean up and do this work? Uh, because one of the things that we still don't have is two men in a truck picking up the box that's over there on Pike Street and other places and sit there for two weeks and then become uh, uh, a thousand dollar job for dumping because it started with a box and now it's got a box and a couch and a TV and something else because it's just been sitting there for a month. Instead of just writing the ticket in the end, waiting for two weeks for that ticket to pass and then writing another ticket because it's not enforced. So I guess my question is, what part of this campaign, number twelve or whatever, is the actual bodies that's going to be needed to make an impact that citizens can see other than billboards and signs and other things uh, that will make their quality of life better?
I think one of the, one of the key elements would be is getting the funding from um, the additional funding from the community development block grant that we've applied for. that we have applied for, um, for neighborhood cleanup services. That'll help enable us to, to move a lot faster with the cleanup services.
I think it's also, if I may interject, I think it's important to note also the opportunities in regards to, uh, Patrick and his team has done a great work of securing other contractors to support us in regards to these developments uh, that code enforcement is involved with, but also working very closely with DPW because we are talking about right of ways. We are talking about certain areas of our city properties that we gotta take care of too. And we understand that and I think there is the, um, the importance that has been put upon us to realize it's gonna, it takes a number of various skilled people inside the, inside of City Hall, but also some expert contractors to get it done faster and quicker than having to linger. So we don't have just one, two boxes that turns into a huge mound of trash and debris. But that is, that's all, as we incentivize and as we move forward, we'll be providing more information as we're doing it um, to show you those improvements on a regular basis.
And my, uh, my last point, um, that hopefully you guys can implement, um, after I'm gone is maybe some open office hours to deal with these complaints. I see that, um, you have a system in place, but I would love for the residents to be able to get a tracking number of their complaints. So if they call and their number 25, they can call back two years later and see that 25 was resolved. And we just don't have that mechanism in the city. And so people are just checking voicemails and whenever that gets lost, uh, that information gets lost from the resident.
Okay.
Thank you, which brings us, um, to our next presentation, which is Pontiac Youth Recreation Enrichment, PyREC Extended Summer Program. Presentation presenters, Mayor Waterman and Robert Burch of PyREC.
Yes, I am happy to give this presentation to give the residents, uh, particularly our families, youth under the age of 21 served by the Youth Village Program, uh, a taste of what's been going on with our summer programming. Uh, and I did want to do this in presentation with, uh, one of the, uh, youth recreation administrators, but, uh, due to the fact that they have such a heavy summer program and, uh, in fact, Tuesday evening, they have both the Spanish class going at New Bessel. They have, um, at Trinity, um, they have, what have they got going there? Called the Dodgeball League. And they also have Homework Health, the UWM complex. And, uh, they didn't have the staff to also have someone come and make this presentation with me. Uh, so I'm happy to do that, uh, myself because I want the residents and families and help to spread the word of all the myriad of youth activities we have going on in the city, uh, especially the, uh, expanded summer programming we have. For those who are here in the audience, I will also annotate this presentation with the PowerPoint, which is on the board. Uh, and I think the next slide will show you, uh, some of the specialized programs, uh, that we have, uh, as part of our summer program. One of the kickoffs was, uh, the Pistons Basketball Camp, extremely popular. Uh, the Pistons ownership flew in to, uh, themselves, uh, helped monitor this five day camp, which was filled to capacity. They gave us a, a number of students and, uh, three weeks before we even started, uh, it was filled to capacity. So the children really had a great time with their Pistons, uh, basketball stars who came and visited the camp and gave them that real technique. Uh, of course, everybody knows basketball is big in Pontiac and, uh, just as a side note, uh, Isaiah Washington, who is, uh, the first, uh, Pontiac native to be drafted to the NBA in 41 years, Jackson, I'm sorry. That's, thank you Perry Ellis. No Perry Earl. Thank you Perry. Um, the first one we drafted, we're gonna honor him as he heads off to the NBA. Uh, but that's just a side note, more information about that. The next slide shows another one of our summer kind of programming. Frank? Slide on by, okay. And that is showing the summer sports programs, a wide array of summer sports programs we have, uh, including, uh, we have the advantage of having available to our youth involved with the program, uh, that beautiful soccer arena, uh, at United Shore. That's now owned by United Shore over on South Boulevard. So several days a week, we do have soccer over there and that's available to, um, all of our youth in the program. In addition to that, we have, um, T-ball, open gym on Monday and Friday at New Bethel. And, um, there is a schedule of these programs that will be, uh, on the city website as well as on the PyREC, uh, face page, uh, for those of you who would like to know more of the details about this programming. So one of the things that we are doing this summer because of the decision by council not to purchase one site, uh, the one of 825 golf drive, although they still have the money in the budget, they decided to keep the money in the budget restricted for purchase of that, that $3.25 million. So, um, maybe we can get them to use that for something in terms of getting a center here, which people very much want, uh, which I would like to see at least one state of the art center, uh, here in the city of Pontiac. And, uh, many of you have heard us talk about the workup we're doing for the E-Walt Center to be potentially that center we develop. So, um, that's one of the thoughts. But, uh, because we didn't have one central site, we reverted back to using a number of what we call pop-up sites throughout the city to make it more accessible to more children of various sites. So among these pop-up sites, we have, uh, several churches, including Trinity Missionary Baptist Church, uh, New Birth International Church, as well as New Bethel Baptist Church. And, um, and then the UWM Sports Complex. In addition to that, the next line, uh, some of the other, we're calling them pop-up sites because they are buried throughout the city, is also Lancaster Village. And, uh, we completed a, um, four week, uh, term of activities in Lancaster Village, which were really popular. In fact, that's what we introduced, uh, the game truck. And we actually bring in the game truck with all the video games and the things that, uh, the kids love to play. And that was extremely popular, that was, uh, Full House, the whole time we had it out there. And we decided to add that on. One of the other kind of diversity sites we're doing, uh, and this is done in collaboration with, um, a community foundation, uh, which did it for a number of weeks during the summer and we're going to extend it, uh, as part of the usual, um, youth recreation program. And that is to have open streets play around specific parks. So there was a schedule, uh, for Cherry Lawn Park, the streets to be closed around that. And kids were actually able to have not only the advantage of the park to play, but also the streets guided by our youth rec staff. So it was Cherry Lawn Park, Baldwin Park and Shirley Park. So as we said, we're going to extend that on. Uh, one of the things is, um, the staffing. For all those many sites as opposed to having a central site, it means you've got staff who's gotta cover a lot of different bases. Well, that's been a challenge. Um, and as you know, the Boys and Girls Club, uh, that is, uh, had been well known amongst many people as they grew up in Pontiac. Uh, they had had two clubs here at one time, which helped to augment our youth recreation activities. Uh, they left the city about 23 years ago and I brought them back just last year to work with us on having, um, bringing in some of their, uh, expertise and their staffing, as well as I thought they could maybe help with even bringing in some of their funding because of name recognition. That hasn't happened. And, um, they came in thinking they were going to operate one center. Uh, and they have been really challenged in trying to operate all these multiple sites throughout the city, so much so. Then the meeting we had last week, uh, they did express the fact that, um, they were disappointed, uh, that council didn't allow them, uh, challenged them to such to meant that they couldn't operate from the central site, that's not what they signed in for. And so they gave us, uh, the city their notice of intent to discontinue their contract with the city. So, uh, that's unfortunate. Uh, I think, uh, we'll continue to work with them and find other ways that they can bring in some of their expertise to the city. Uh, but we wanted to make sure they knew that we wanted this to be a Pontiac based program and not just an outskirts of, um, Detroit Boys and Girls Club. So we continue to talk with them, uh, to the extent that, um, they decided, well, maybe they'd build their own site. And I have to understand that council president invited them to come make a presentation a few weeks ago in which they, their version of the, um, uh, E-Walt project was the city give them the money to, uh, make the E-Walt Center a their project. And I had to explain to them that the E-Walt Center was also on Galloway Park and the city cannot give property to an outside group without a referendum of the people, that's required by our charter. So anyway, we'll continue to develop with them. I hope there's other ways we can work with the Boys and Girls Club. But I'm very happy for the kinds of programs that we're bringing to the city. I want people to know about it and I want, uh, as many youths as possible to take advantage of the, uh, programs that we're bringing. Uh, we're going to be offering more, bringing in more partners in terms of music programs and, um, United Shore, as I talked about their soccer arena. Um, many of you read they're doing a $10 million renovation of that and bringing eight basketball courts. And they have said to us that that will be available, uh, to the city's youth as part of our program too. So that's just a wonderful opportunity. And, uh, as you know, one of my passions is be able to educate and enrichment for our children. So I'm very happy and this is a very personal accomplishment to be able to offer these youth programs for the city of Pontiac. That completes my presentation.
Questions from, uh, for Madam Mayor? Does anybody have any questions for the mayor? Okay, nobody has questions for the mayor. I do, uh, want to just say, uh, publicly, uh, thank you to the Boys and Girls Club. They are a phenomenal organization and just to clarify, the presentation that they made to the city council was to match whatever the city put into the facility. So I just wanted to say that for clarity's sake and then we can move on to the next item. Item number six is adoption of an emergency ordinance or extension of supplemental pension payment for the city of Pontiac Police and Fire retirees.
Okay, and Darren Carrington, our Finance Director's absence, I will, um, present that, uh, for him. Uh, and this emergency ordinance we've, uh, discussed previously, this of course is, uh, the gap coverage, uh, amount that we give to our retirees until their healthcare coverage can be restored. As you know, we are working diligently to make sure that that happens. Uh, we are, uh, almost to the point where we can announce, uh, the date that, uh, if everything goes well with the boards that are in charge of that. I had hoped we would be able to restore healthcare coverage to our retirees by October 1st. But until then, I had promised the retirees that would make every effort to continue that $400 per month uh, that they were getting to enhance their pension until such time as their health coverage was restored. So it has been my responsibility to make that recommendation to council. Uh, council, we did that, uh, it was published as required for an ordinance change by the city clerk and now it's brought back to you, council. And you have for every year that we have brought this recommendation to you, have also validated that and it made it possible for the retirees to continue to receive that $400 in increased pension coverage until such time as we are able to render their healthcare coverage. And I ask you again to vote for that, so that we can continue that promise to our retirees.
Anybody have any questions for the mayor?
I guess, I guess, Mr. President, I guess, I would not call it an emergency ordinance. I would say it's just an extension over what's been given out for the last, last few years. And just in case it doesn't, doesn't materialize with a VVA, it's still gonna be another continuation, but it doesn't have a drop dead date on it. But if there was anything I want to consider to be an emergency, I see the police and fire and the gurds are both listed as emergency ordinance for extensions because of, uh, I believe the word was health and safety. At the same time, um, mayor, I guess I have to interject, the 5,500 people that lost power for seven days, they have no relief, no lack of oxygen and everything else. And we, we can't even provide them with, with an ordinance that they could take the DTE to be compensated for. Because we did declare an emergency, but I do not see the retirees' supplemental pay as being an emergency. Thank you, Mr. President.
Council President? Just to clarify for the pro temp, there is a drop dead date. Um, this is not to exceed December 31st, 2021.
Thank you.
You're welcome. I support it.
All right, um, can we, uh, if we're gonna suspend the rules, let's do it for items number six and seven. So I need you to restate your motion. No, we're gonna do them separately, but we need, we only need to suspend the rules once. If we do it, we would have to take a vote to suspend the rules twice.
Yeah, it's fine, we can do, I'll take back my motion. We, I make a motion that we suspend the rules for both six and seven and we vote on it.
Is there support?
Support.
Okay. All right. Roll call. I'm suspending the rules.
Williams?
Yes.
Carter?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Edela?
Yes.
Taylor Burks?
Yes.
Okay, is there a motion for adoption of an emergency ordinance for the extension of supplemental pension payment for the city of Pontiac Police and Fire retirees?
Support.
It's been moved and supported, any discussion? CNN on roll call?
Carter? Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Edela?
Yes.
Taylor Burks?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Five years.
Okay, and so, um, ordinance adopted.
Thank you, Paul.
Item number seven, uh, is there a motion to have adoption of an emergency ordinance for extension of supplemental pension payment for the city of Pontiac General Employees Retirement System retirees?
I'm a little supportive.
All right, it's been moved, I'll take the support from Miller. Um, any discussion? CNN on roll call?
Miller?
Yes.
Edela?
Yes.
Taylor Burks?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Carter?
Yes.
Five years.
Okay, motion passes, uh, which brings us to item number eight, which is, uh, Mr. Clerk?
Thank you, uh, Mr. President. So as you know, we're, um, in the midst of completing the, uh, review of medical marijuana applications that we received as it relates to, uh, provisioning centers. And the hearing officer that the city retained, John Frazier, has changed firms. So this resolution is just simply, um, to approve, uh, him under the new firm. Previously with the GRIWA law, he is now with Dyckman.
Mr. President? May I?
Councilwoman Edela?
May I make? May I make a motion that we postpone this indefinitely until everybody passes their, um, no conflict issue? Because we have seen, we've all received an email today where this is a conflict of issue. And we need to clear ourselves. The city needs to protect themselves. We can't have people that have conflict of issue dealing with medical marijuana, such as what we re- emailed. We received today from Attorney Giff. Thank you.
Okay. Attorney Sharp and then, um, Mr. Boyd.
Uh, unfortunately, I didn't see the email, so I can't really speak on it. Uh, just as it relates to this item, I just need clarification because it's my interpretation that this, uh, attorney has been in place, has been reviewing the application. It's just a ceremonial thing in that he has changed firms.
Then maybe you need to read the email before you be speaking on it because there are conflicts of interest.
As I said, Council President, I'm just seeking clarification in that my interpretation again is this attorney has been in place. And he's just changed firms. And this is the reason for the resolution that is before you. That's the only reason I'm, I just want a clarification, thank you.
Mr. Clerk, if I can ask you a question?
Thank you, uh, Mr. President. And, and that is correct, um, Attorney Sharp. And the hearing officer has nothing to do with the memorandum. And the hearing officer has nothing to do with the memorandum that Mr. Gibbs issued. But I do kind of in essence want to speak to the memorandum that Mr. Gibbs without speaking directly since it was issued under Attorney Client Privilege. On February 26th, 2019, the City Council approved a resolution adopting a conflict of interest policy for the review of medical marijuana permit applications. And in that, the city approved a permit review of conflict of interest policy. And the policy states that people will sign the conflict of interest if they become aware of a conflict after they've signed the conflict of interest. Because it's important to note that reviewers only receive applications as we reviewed them. There was no review of all applications all at once. We've been reviewing applications by district. First was Caesar Chavez, then was downtown, then was non-overlay, and now we're into a walk. So if I'm unaware of any particular conflict, then how can I disclose the conflict? So, but as soon as I become aware of a conflict, then I must disclose, or any reviewer must disclose that conflict and that reviewer that's referenced in his memorandum did not review the applications that he had a conflict with. So there was, in a sense, there really was no conflict. It would have only been a conflict had he not disclosed the conflict and went on and reviewed the applications, which he did not in essence do. So I just want that clear in essence very much. So there has been no violation of the conflict of interest policy. Mr. Who, who's with nothing to do with Mr. Frazier, did disclose the fact that he had a conflict with three applicants. Not, in a sense, he didn't do any work for them as related to their Pontiac application, but he had previously done work with these particular people in some other capacity. So therefore, there is in essence, so therefore, he didn't review the applications. And just to continue to cast dispersions on this whole process to me is just utterly ridiculous when indeed the process was indeed followed. And I made aware when I released the non-overlay scores, I let all the applicants in essence know that because there is in essence, nothing to hide. But this has nothing to do with the issue that's before you, which relates to the hearing officer. Who has been doing, I'm sorry, who has been doing a phenomenal job in essence to this point?
Okay, so I'm gonna let Attorney Sharp review this because we vote on this next week because this is the study session. And so if Mr. Gibbs and the city clerk can get together there, maybe we send this to a subcommittee or whatever we need to do in order to do that. I just don't know where we are at with confidentiality and the process at this point. So I don't want to keep going, but just especially when you're mentioning people's names. So if we can go to item number nine.
Here we'll address this topic and this is regarding the asphalt specialty for the CDBG, senior centers parking lot replacement project and the Clinton Trail, Clinton River Trail Maintenance and Safety Improvements Project. Mr. Siddiqui?
Yes, good evening. This is a resolution to approve and agree, to approve the agreement between the city and Asphalt Specialists Incorporated for $395,309 for the CDBG funded senior centers parking lots reconstruction. The CDBG funds that were available for this project were $265,000. I am, the resolution states and I'm recommending that we also utilize 130, the balance of funds from.
Okay, and Mr. Siddiqui did bring this to our DPW subcommittee meeting. And as you can see by the parking lots, they are in bad repair. I'm just concerned about the mixing of the two resolutions together in item nine instead of the separation of them, Mr. Siddiqui. So the block grant for the asphalt services for the parking lots is one thing. But then I would like to see it as a separate resolution for the $620,000 for the Clinton River Trail maintenance.
Oh, that, I think that's from last, that's a line that was left in from the last agenda from last week.
Okay, but it's on our agenda there.
I know, I see it on the agenda. It's not in the, not in the packet.
Okay, so.
I think that was just a typo.
So if we can get that cleaned up for next week, just so it's clean, we can vote on it then. Okay, thank you. Which brings us to item number 10, resolution to approve the zoning map amendment, request for ZMA 21-04 for parcel number 641733407, 035036037 to amend the current zoning from R1 family dwelling to C1 local business. Who's presenting, Madam Mayor?
Yes, Mr. President, I've asked Burgess Thompson, our planning manager, to address that. This is a recommendation that had come through the Planning Commission, Rex, Mr. Gusterson?
That is correct.
And has referred now to council with their recommendation.
Okay, good evening, Madam Mayor, Council President Williams and City Council. Before you, as was identified by Council President, this is S, our ZMA 21-04. This is zoning map amendment or zoning parcel. Frank, if you could forward a couple slides, the next one. Here on this slide, you can kind of see that's outlined in red, represents the parcel or parcels. It is on the northwest corner of Midway and Sanford. It is an area in regards to a well-traveled corridor of Sanford, but also in regards to neighborhoods and other commercial business services that are located along that corridor. Next slide, please. Here on our zoning map, it does show the entire area around it, except for just a little bit to the north. There is some areas there, zone C1, local business. So here you're having smaller retail businesses, business services and the like, along with, as you know, in regards to our zoning ordinance, a number of churches that are in the area. All of it is zoned R1, but does provide a certain abilities for people to integrate with the churches and their parishioner families that are in the area. Same thing with the need for growing type of non-residential type of uses that could come into an area to provide support and services to those residents that are in the area. If you go to the next slide, represents a little bit of an overview in regards to the future land use plan that we clearly have in place. It does show this category as R-1. And if you look at the intent of that district, that zoning district, it talks about the intent is to build upon what is sustainable and what makes a sustainable residential neighborhood. And it is with that of locating strategically or important locations, local commercial, retail and business services. And that is kind of, is a very major land use objective as part of that R1 district. But it is properly in, not zoned correctly, to allow it to go to a C-1 for what is planned by the applicant as a local grocer, which at one time it was and it's been abandoned building, we all know, for a period of time. The next slide, just a little bit of a sketch plan. This will be taking the existing structure, turning it into a neighborhood grocery store with adequate parking, access to the facility and so forth. And just keep in mind, we're not just talking about the one parcel, we're talking about all three parcels that are owned by the owner that we parted the entire site and we'll be working with him administratively and also with our planning commission to get that site plan review completed, following the, following your approval as relates to the zoning map amendment. Next slide, when, as you know, council, you're very familiar with this process. So there is select criteria that we all review internally and provide that technical review in regards to what criteria has been met, what has not been met. It does go through the process as relates to public hearing at the planning commission, which occurred on August the 4th. And we're here tonight to demonstrate and to show and answer any of your questions as relates to those zoning criterias. It's important, obviously, that the, as from a criteria standpoint, it does match certain goals and objectives of our plan. There's in terms of compatibility in regards to ability, taking a look at traffic impacts, infrastructure that we have existing there in regards to utility and services, providing easy access for police and fire protection. Taking a look at that proposed zoning district, C1 local business zoning district is, can be met with certain requirements as relates to building that type of facility at that location. He did identify the applicant, Mr. Conja, who represents his company of Four Brothers Real Estate Holdings LLC to develop a neighborhood and grocery store. And more than that, he is here to answer any questions you may have in regards to his intent. His intent, besides the grocery store, it really is, is reaching out to the community and providing food and product for maybe disadvantaged or families that are in need at certain times. And it's that relationship that the planning commission and ourselves believe very closely that kind of ties in with that, that spirit of giving back to that neighborhood that is sorely needed in the southeast section of the city. And lastly, in regards to this request for this zoning, would not create any compatibility with what is existentially zoned within this neighborhood. I'll be here to answer any questions.
Yeah, I have several questions, Mr. Gusterson. For the audience who's listening, this is the old George's store. That was owned by the Felices family on the corner of Midway, because we're just talking about parcel numbers, but it's George's. And there's about five churches that are in the immediate vicinity there. You said it went to the planning commission on what day?
August the 4th.
What was the planning commission vote and did anybody recruit themselves from their vote?
I, it was passed. It had four votes. Nobody abstained.
Did the mayor vote on?
She, actually she was not there at that meeting.
Okay, I just want to make sure because in full disclosure, that was the campaign or a campaign location for the mayor's reelection bid. So I just want to make sure that the process is fair to the applicant and that everybody knows, especially my colleagues who might not traverse through District 7, where that building was, that was there. So I just wanted to make sure that it was pointed out. I have some other questions, but I would like the applicant to speak first. And then I'll.
Yes, he's here tonight, Mr. Conja.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Honorable City Council. I got to apologize, a little nervous here. Not my cup of tea. So yes, first and foremost, what I think it's important to point out is that traditionally, historically, I should say, that this location has been a, as mentioned by the president, that this location has been the liquor store. I myself been in business in retail world for about 35 plus years. In fact, I was the, the person who opened up the first truly Hispanic grocery store on Perry and MLK in 2001. There and after kind of sold it off to my partner. We parted ways for whatever reason it was at the time. But we took that location and really, for the time I was there, turned that location into what I believe was a true pillar for the, for that community and especially the Hispanic community, targeting that community at that time. But that's no here or there. What we plan to do here is basically, as I've mentioned to the zoning, I have a collaboration with Ms. Rosa of Unique Food Management whereby we're going to take my experience and her experience and basically target a community we feel is a food desert. In fact, I've been in Pontiac off and on for about 40 years. My relatives own the super K liquor and I know a lot of people from the south side and understand the matrix of why Pontiac is a food desert. A lot of people, in my opinion, currently go to Hollywood Market or they would go to Walmart. And I don't know if there's really a true conventional store, if you will, on the north side, other than some Hispanic operations aside from the GTM. So our goal is to, although the footprint of this particular location is a little bit small and and the, and the goal is massive, and whatever I mean by massive, I mean that we're going to target the elderly. In fact, let me step back one. I have a, I have an app specially developed that is going to target the community. That is going to target especially the elderly that don't have vehicles whereby on demand they can make purchases free charge of delivery fee to kind of suit those needs. That app isn't a liquor store app or whereby we're going to sell beer or liquor. That's not the intent here. The intent here is to create a, a location rather than call it a grocery store, we're going to call it a destination. And hopefully be able to meet the day-to-day needs of those individuals that are looking for a true location whereby they can go and purchase a small selection of meat. Again, the footprint doesn't really lend itself. Purchase produce, hopefully in the summertime, do a little farmer's market outside. Full line of groceries, community programs. I can go on and on and on. But I believe the collaboration between Unique Foods and my experience, I think definitely is going to bring a powerhouse to Pontiac whereby we're hopeful that moving forward that we could find the resources to develop a location within the city of Pontiac strategically placed, perhaps between 10 and 10 and 20,000 square foot whereby that footprint can really meet the true needs of the Pontiac. Questions?
I have questions.
Actually, I was going to mention one to either the African or better yet to Vern. Vern and, I'm looking at your parcel numbers and we know there is no section 17 in Pontiac. 64 is Pontiac. There's no 17, never has, never will. It's repeated over and over again.
I'll have to double check that to verify that. I'm almost positive.
It should be a 14. It's gonna help you out.
Okay.
64, 14, 33.
14, okay, well, okay.
Stand.
I just working for you. That is true.
If I, if I may, I, as Mr. Conja was talking, I just find Council President's question was in regards to the attendance at the August 4th meeting. I just want to say I had four members at the meeting, including the mayor.
Tell me what the roll call vote was?
It was four, four zero.
No, what I'm saying is who voted at the meeting?
All four did.
And does that include the mayor?
Yes.
Thank you. So.
In regards to the parcel numbers, I mean, we know the address, but the, obviously the 327 Midway. Let me check in regards to, I just want to verify going back to the planning commission in regards to if this was all, if this is just a typo on my part as part of this presentation, so let me make sure if that's correct. But we'll, we'll come back to you next week with the correct information.
Mr. Gusterson, I would just like to have a copy of that planning commission tape before.
Sure.
And then for, I see they've got some people from the community supporting this. My question is, is there or was there a letter of support from all of the churches given? uh given um to the applicant um during their presentation?
Uh no, we did not receive any uh written uh support from the churches at this time uh for this grocery store. But I I believe that Mr. Conja did refer to a couple of pastors uh that seemed to be in support.
Okay, um I I I'll just do some some legwork myself uh in between now and next week, but I I do need uh a tape of that planning commission meeting, especially with the date and the timing, which is problematic. The applicant has been trying to do this store for a year or so. Uh but the the way it looks to me um I I need to, I I think probably speak to an attorney or something before we take this up as a council. Just based on how that is. Yep, go ahead.
Yeah, if if I may be able to just set up the script. So the property was purchased um on or about, I believe, June of twenty twenty uh in the height of COVID. Um I tried every effort prior to the acquisition of this property to do proper due diligence. Uh the seller indicated in his listing that the property is a general um, general commercial. I come to find out that moving forward, uh when I submitted the application, and of course, this was trying to navigate uh the right people to submit that application during the COVID, that uh the property is actually uh residential. And I I I, from what I'm gathering from your concern, it's this became the campaign office of of the mayor and and could there be a conflict? Um let me kind of assure you, especially in the council, that the reason that the mayor was able to obtain this particular property was because of a of of my cousin who personally came to me and said, you know, I like your location. I am the campaign manager of the mayor. I would respectfully like to have this particular property as her camp- campaign office. At the time, the property is sitting idle, um and we are still in the process of awaiting an answer for the application that, as you mentioned, sitting for about a year. So in in all honesty, uh the mayor had nothing really to do with this. I went to the proper channels, uh waited the proper time, spent the proper money to be before you today.
Yeah, li- uh listen, sir, I I have nothing um uh of disparagement to say to you. I just want to make sure it doesn't look or appear to the residents of the city and other business owners that just was fast-tracked because of that. And so I want to make sure that I'm doing my due diligence because it's on the administrative side that had the conflict, not you as a business owner. You can open up your business to whoever you choose to, and we're glad to have you in the city of Pontiac. I just have to make sure before I make any votes with my hundred and twenty-eight days left that I'm not doing anything improper.
Understood.
Mr. Chair, I would also like to make comment on this particular item.
Yep, Madam Mayor, then uh I'm going to have a point of privilege for Dr. Taylor, and then we're going to adjourn this meeting. Go ahead, Madam Mayor.
Yes, I would like to speak in favor of the planning commission decision, of which I'm a member of the, well-known member of the planning commission. Uh and uh so that the public has misled that you're trying to cast dispersions on this particular planning commission decision, I would like to just make some clarifications. Uh this property owned by Mr. Conja, who has been an investor in the city of Pontiac and has known reputable stores throughout, was purchased for him long before uh there was even a campaign going. Uh and uh was brought uh to uh planning commission and the planners would work with him to get him to this point. Um this is a project which uh I support, is supported by many people in this area. Uh and it speaks to a platform that the city holds in general, and that is that the city is um is is a lax uh fresh food nutritional stores for purchase in our neighborhoods. It speaks to the fact that Pontiac is known as a food desert, and it speaks to the fact that this is something he wants to address by restoring that market. It was a market before, which has been met with the greeting. It's kind of ironic that during the time when I did uh rent it as a campaign office while I was sitting bacon uh waiting for um uh this process to go through and his renovations, uh people kept coming up as they saw the lights on and said, is it open yet? Is it open yet? Wanted to know if this market had been restored. So it is going to be met with great anticipation for people who have to go quite a while to get fresh produce, uh which we know is an important thing that we're trying to bring to the city. And it's uh not only this project has been brought, given extra uh impetus by the fact that uh Mr. Conja's plan for this has been joined by well-known uh specialists in the city of Pontiac. Uh we have right here, uh Rosa Randolph of Unique Foods of Meals and Wheels, known, and as well as other people from her staff who helped develop this concept, developing this into a food market, fresh food produce and co-op. So we speak to that. And uh it is in a area that is unusual for this particular property to be marked residential when everything around it is is um a commercial. So uh it uh speaks to, if council decides on uh the basis of what it should be decided on, not on any political um tattletale, but on the basis of what is good for the zoning of that particular community. And this, I think you would agree with the planning commission recommendation that we uh that we grant him this zoning map amendment for a very worthy and uh well-anticipated project that he's investing in the city of Pontiac.
Um I'm going to give a point of privilege to Councilwoman Doris Taylor Burks.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um I want you to let all of your friends that was here last week know that I thank them very much for reaching out to try to help me um with the um project that uh over at the cemetery. I had a uh a meeting this this week, just a few days ago. And we were told at my meeting that um they are going to fix everything. They are going to put all new things uh all the way around. So let them know that I appreciate their help and wanting to help me because it bothers me very, very much. And so I I will keep you informed. If they don't do what they told us that they were going to do, the president was sitting there too. And um I'll let you know. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
I'm Doris Taylor Burks. We're going to adjourn this meeting at seven forty.